Sure. All right. Yeah, so, so I I do what I can do, you know, and like I said, I'm I'm here for for you all, not for myself. And so I wanna make sure that whatever I'm doing is is beneficial, also relevant. So you guys keep me honest. All right. I like the, I like the uh this kind of Times Roman font more than any other fonts. And we'll go through this today. Well, this is, this is the exact thing as you see in um this right here. What I wanna do is I wanna put this back together. So if I blow this up, and then I go back and grab this one, I can stick it back on there. Like that. Okay, there we go. Now I just switch back and forth. Alright, so before we get started with all of that, this is very interesting. I like, I I wanted to talk about this today for a second, uh once we open up because she uses a lot of sight words. And we're gonna go through some of her lesson today, and we're gonna see if we can't read some of this without the Nicou. Um, and I don't want anybody to be intimidated by that, but I do want you to, I do want you to feel the struggle, you know, the the struggle is how you grow. So I can't, I can't keep you comfortable, because if I keep you comfortable, you're never gonna get any better. So we're gonna do a little, we're gonna have a little discomfort where it's gonna, we're gonna get through it.
I'm I'm already warmed up with the discomfort.
Absolutely, absolutely. After a long day from the plantation, you know, I'm ready to relax and I don't want no discomfort, but we just gotta push forward. We just gotta push forward. Um, let's see, I wanna blow this up to, let's say, two hundred. I'm trying to figure out the best place to put this toolbar. If you see me moving something, it's me trying to move that toolbar.
Uh, you, the only thing I see you showing now is your keyboard, though. And a code, a code Nalo, a code Nalo is on. She's in Texas. She's in Texas this week.
What do you see now?
I love the Cuba.
Okay.
Or the greeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I, that's what I wanted to show. I'm a, you know, this, these, these computers and laptops, man, they, they, they make them smaller and smaller as you get older and they, and they are not, uh, I do not like this small computer.
I hear what you're saying. I'm struggling and I have small fingers.
Yeah, they make them smaller and smaller nowadays.
This is new.
So I'm trying to, but anyway. We're gonna, we're gonna start with our opening. Um, and I still haven't done this here, just, yeah, you gotta bear with me. I'm trying to try and get my life together, you know how it is. Alright, so we're gonna start with the opening here. Nalihagish Hakivoh.
Nalihagish Hakivoh.
Nalihagish Hakivoh.
Okay. Nalihagish Hakivoh. And that just means to humble, this is a very good, um, this is a very good verb to know, right, to be humble. Let's go ahead and put that in. Peeling. Uh-oh, yeah. Alright, so here we go right here. Lehagish comes from to serve or to hand over. Alright.
Lehagish.
Lehagish, yes, ma'am. I'm gonna go to the full conjugation of this real quick. This mouse is dragging, I use my finger, maybe it's a little faster. Alright, so, um, lehagish, where is this right here? Legish, leh, where is lehagish? There you go, hagish, agesh. Right, lehagish, which is to serve or to surrender, to serve over, to hand over. This is, th- this is not the same word as obey, right? Obey is another word which means servant, right? Like obediah. Obediah is another word for s- to serve, right? Let me show you. Obediah.
Would you spell lehagish? Uh, lama hay.
Okay, so, how to spell lehagish is like this. Lamed, hay, gimel, yud, and shane.
Talking about switch up.
Okay, that's okay. And then we have obey. Obey is gonna be, I believe it's like this, obey. And that is like obediah, and that is to work, to operate, or to function, right? So obediah, the servant of y'all is what the operator of the, to function, right? Obediah. He was called a servant of y'all. So you have two words for to serve. One is to surrender, and the other one is to work, is the difference. And the English, the English doesn't do, doesn't do a good, the English does not do well in translating that because it uses the word serve for both of them. But uh lehagish is to surrender, and uh uh ovad or obey, obediah is to work toward, or to serve, to do work toward. So very, uh, very different, very different uh words, but they're translated in English sometimes using the same word, which is part of the confusion. Nalihagish Hakivoh.
Nalihagish Hakivoh.
Yahwa, safta, tifta, ufi, yahgid, tahil, ltiya, tahilatika.
Tahilatika.
Yes, ma'am. Tahilatika. And we, we talked about before how the lama has that dagesh inside of it, and that dagesh is telling you that you're going to be saying that, you're gonna be saying that twice. Let me show you. I'm gonna copy this, let's see if this works, let's see if it likes it. I'm gonna paste it right there, alright? Then I'm gonna copy this, and I'm gonna paste it again. So you, you have this. So basically, it's gonna, it's gonna look like this. Let me, uh, let's change the color on this to something that sticks out. Um, let's go with a blue. Alright, so we have ter, heal.
Heal, tahil.
Yes, and because that, because that, uh, that lama is double, I erased the, uh, the, the other, the other kamats, alright? Uh, let, let me show you again. Watch that first lama right there. I'm gonna go back on it, which is right here. See how it has that uh kamats underneath it? Cause I just doubled it. So I erased that kamats underneath it, because this is what that dagesh, this dagesh in here is telling you to do to that lama. It's telling you to say the lama twice. And uh, that is a, that is part of the dagesh forte, or dag- uh dagesh lenay. Let's uh, let's search that out real quick. Dagesh. Um, lenay. Dagesh lenay. Alright, um, a small dot put in the middle of a consonant in Hebrew. It originally had the effect of transforming a fricative sound into a stop. So that's not the right one. So we're gonna go with the dagesh forte. Dagesh forte. Alright, so the dagesh forte in Hebrew, the dagesh forte, and it's what it's called, or whatever this is, may be placed in almost any letter. This indicates a germination doubling of that consonant in the pronunciation of pre-modern Hebrew. So dagesh forte is the doubling. Okay, dagesh forte is the doubling. Um, a- 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 i- it's more prominent than the dagesh lenay, but I did see here where it says dagesh forte versus lenay. One is forte is means, forte is Latin, it means big, lenay is Latin, it means little, alright? The dagesh forte indicates the letter is double. The dagesh lenay indicates a letter. Now, this is a, the begad kafat, right? Bates, gimel, dalit, uh, calf, fey, and ta- and tav. So you can see these, uh, these letters in the consonant, right? Ba- Bates, gimel, dalit, calf, fey, and tav, letter is spoken as a stop. So this here is very indistinguishable now. They still teach it, but it's not very, it's not very prominent in Hebrew anymore, because it was used for people that were not native Hebrew speakers, coming from Slavic countries or coming from Latin countries who had a hard time pronouncing the Hebrew. Okay? So, back to this. We have tahil la t- t- tahilat, latika, right? Teka.
Tahilatika.
There you go, tahilatika. Yahwa, and here we have safta. There's a little break right there. Yahwa, safta, tifta, another one right there. Yahwa, safta, tifta, ufi, yahgid, tahilatika. Tahilatika. You gotta just practice that sometimes, you know, it's really, uh, it's really confusing when you see that, all those dots in there, and this dagesh forte on that, uh, on that lama. Alright? Uma yahwa, vea fusu, oi vecha, vea nusu, misan eka, mi panecha. That line right there. Kumaya yahwa, vea fusu, oi vecha, vea nusu, misan eka, mi panecha. I'm stressing that break right there, cause this, this shiva is telling you, stop that sound right there and break that syllable. Alright? Misan eka, eka. Misan nek, yeah. So just, uh, that's where the, that's where the, that's where the emphasis would go, misan nek. And this, of course, is the divine citation, which we'll go into one day. I'll give you, I'll, I'll take some time one day and, and fill it all in so we can, we can read it. But that's just what that is there. This will be on video too. You could pause it and try to go through it if you like, on your own with the video. Um, and that's all for the beginning. Let's close this out. Um, so I, I was looking at, um, Sarasimakis' um, lesson eight. This is the latest one. This is the latest one that I have, and there's way too much going on here for us to try and, and, and go through all of it. I don't know if this is the answer key for that or not.
No, no, no. I don't think she put it in. Did she put it in Evrit?
No, she didn't. No, she didn't.
Okay. Okay, so that's not, oh, and here's nine as well. So it's nine.
It's ten, it's, it's eight, nine, and ten.
Eight, nine, and ten, okay.
Because we're, we're, we're gonna be gone for three weeks.
Okay. Okay, I'm clear. So yeah, so there's, there's, there's really no, I mean, it would be impossible for us to go through all of these in one night. Uh, it wouldn't even be reasonable, uh, for me.
It's been a long day already.
Yes, sir. I, I, I agree with you. So what I have transcribed so far is this first paragraph. And so, we're gonna go through this first paragraph, but I don't wanna look at it like this with the Nicou. I wanna look at it without the Nicou, like this. Um, because there should be some things here that we should recognize. And, and, and let, let's focus specifically on this first line. Okay? I'm going to highlight that first line. Let's focus on this first line. And uh, somebody tell me, what do you, what do you see? What do you notice?
The bait, well.
Not sure.
There are no vowels.
Not sure if I noticed. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, so you notice there are no Nicou, okay? So, when, when, when I, coming from the standpoint of somebody who claims to know Hebrew, right, like I do, um, when I, when I see Hebrew writing and I don't see, uh, the Nicou, the first thing that comes to my mind is holy moly, there's no Nicou, right? So you're gonna have to get over that huh first, right, that there's no Nicou. So then you gotta start trying to break things down. And so here's how I start breaking things down. First, I look for uh, things like this u here. See this u? That u is showing me that it's a vowel. Okay, and I'm seeing another u there, and I'm, I'm gonna treat those u's as vowels. Of course, I know the rule for, for vowel, and so I'm gonna treat vowel as a vowel, okay? And then, I know that whenever a vowel appears at the end of a word, it's gonna be the u sound, right? I know that generally speaking, when I see a, a Bates or a hay, those are affixes to the word, right? And then, once I, once I go through that process, then I start to notice words. Like I noticed, this word is evrit, right? That's Hebrew. This is in something. And this is the something, right? So now I'm seeing lone dean, and because this is plural, I know that this is a plural ending. Anu, lone dean. So our or we, right? Anaknu, anee, ata, right? A tim, a ten, anu. So this is anu, lone dean. This becomes one of our sight words that we learn from, right, from Sarra, lomed. Lomed being the, the construct state, right? Lamad, if I, if I move the vowel, lamad is the root word, which is a palver. Lamad, lomed, lone dean, lomidot, right? So I know this word is to teach or to learn. So then it just becomes a matter of, okay? Hebrew, we are learning, right? The rava, what is rabah or ramah? Or, 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 it's either rabah or rava. Alright, so let's see, let's see what, let's see what it says.
Oh, I got it. I remember, I remember from the class, but go ahead.
So we have here, uh, bekita, bekita, evrit.
Evrit.
Anu.
Anu.
Lone dean. Ha, hmm, rave.
Harbe.
Harve, yeah. What is harve?
Uh, what did she say? Harbe is big, large, um, a lot, much.
Am I not like that, that little character in there? Okay, so let me, let me just type it in there. It didn't like that, uh, that extra little character in there. Maybe I can reach it. There we go. Alright, let's see what it says. Harbe, to increase.
To increase, okay.
Alright, so I, I wanna blow this out, cause that's the new, that's a new verb for us to, in, in the class. Harbe, and it means to increase. So let's click on it and see what, what, what it tells us. Alright, look at the conjugation for that. Lehar, boat, lehar boat. Lehar boat. Alright. So we have marve, marva, marvin, marbot. Here, be- here beati, here beati, here beenum. We increased, I increased, you increased, here betta, here, here bet. Here beteam, here beten. Where is harbe? Let's see where harbe is. Oh, it's right there. Increase, alright? It's like it's giving a command. So let's see, we can put this in context now. So, um, Hebrew, our Hebrew, right? Learning, our Hebrew learning, the increase, right, to increase. Now, now, what is this last little, what is this first word here? Does anybody know what this first word is?
Bekita. Class.
You said it's class?
Okay, bekita.
Okay, let's see. And, and, and I'm telling you, when I, when I'm doing Hebrew, and I, it's something that I'm unfamiliar with, it's slow, and it's arduous, but it's necessary, you know, we just, we just go through it.
Yes, it is.
I don't have, I don't have somebody in my ear every day helping me speak in Hebrew, and so I have to, uh, I have to just, you know, um,
Lay out, lay out.
Yeah. Um, so, um, bekita, bekita, right? In the form, is that, is that the word she used, bekita?
No class.
Okay, okay. In the form, I hear, uh, grade, class, school, squad, army. See how that just blows out that understanding a little bit more? Uh, so let's, let's look at it. All forms of that, kita. Um, in the construct state is form of, forms. I wanna find the, uh, the, the roots of the infinitives. Let's see. Um, map, map, likto. Um, I don't see the root of that at all. I see the root, I'm sorry, I don't see the infinitive. Let's go back. I guess that is the, uh, that's crazy. I guess it is the, uh, this is far back as it's gonna take me. Form. Now, what, what do you think it means by form? Because this is not, this is not the same form as a, like, to form the earth, like, form something from the earth, or to form something. This is a different kind of form. I don't know. I don't know why she used that word. I wouldn't have used that word for class.
Oh, oh, understandable.
Yeah, but, uh, she did, maybe, I don't know, I don't, I've never seen that for grade.
I mean, she said something in, in the class, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah. So that's, that's, it's a, it's a new word for me. And I know it means class, cause I, I reviewed it before I, 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 I put it on there, but I know it means class, but I've never seen it used.
We've, we've used it in, uh, other, under other teachers also.
Okay.
More green.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'mma, I'mma ask, um, I'mma ask my, 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 my friend, Pa, Paia about that one, cause that's, that's a new, um, that's new for me as well. I've never seen class like that before. Um, so we have bekita, avrit, anu, lone dean, ha, ra, rave, harve, har, harbe, right? Harbe. Right, evrit, harbe, evrit. Then we have evrit again. Yom, what is yom? Day. Now, I don't know why she has days twice, but she does have day twice.
Daily.
Yom is a different word. What is yom yom?
Daily.
Yom yom means daily.
Okay. That's new on me too.
Yom yom means daily. That's a good.
Yeah, let's see. Yomi, daily, okay? So she's saying what? That, uh, uh, avrit yom yomi, av- avrit yom yom, Hebrew day, Hebrew daily. Increase a Hebrew daily? She has a period right there. I can just copy everything she said, period right there, but okay. Hebrew daily. This is the day we, korein, what is korein?
Korein, what does she say? Korein. Korein.
Okay, so look, korein.
It's to read, read.
Is read, right?
Plural for read.
Yes, plural for read. We know it's plural because of anu, which is the same as anaknu. The, the day we read porin, this is, this is a miss, I misspelled this, it should be kol, right?
Yeah, kol is the word.
Porin, ah, kol, mini. What is mini?
Uh, minne, kind, minne. Minne, kind.
Kind, okay.
All kinds, all kinds.
Yes. Ah, ah, kol, minne is all kinds, yes, right. Copy. And I wanna go, let's, let's blow this one out and see what it looks like. Alright, minne is types of, okay, kinds. Let's go to see what it says. Mean is the inflection of it. Mean, minne. It's a very interesting little word, isn't it? Minne, types, right? So maybe after their kind or after their, let's see, Blue Letter Bible. I just wanna see what the word they use for kind in the Bible, right? After their kind, let's see what it says. And God created the wells and every living creature that moves, which the waters brought forth the bundling, and every wing fell after his kind. Okay, so let's blow it out. Um, after their kind, look at that. Same word, mean. Lemina, le, minne. Minay. Heem, leminahim. You see that? Uh, after their kind.
Or him.
Right here. Lemina him. Or him, le, leminahim, leminahim. Yes. So this is the same word that she uses in the scripture, or the same word used in the scriptures that she uses in her writing.
Masculine for those kinds of. Those kinds.
Right. And this here, I wanna see what after. After their kind. Uh. I believe this word here is the word for after. Let's see. No, I wanna copy this. Let me copy it. Oh, that's the waters, hamaing, sorry, hamaing. So after their kind is right here, off share. Which. Brought forth abundantly, this is, uh. Shar. Zoo, shar zoo. Which is brought forth abundantly. The eight. Call, and it all, and every. Right, bird. Oof. Or foul, right, same word for chicken. Oof. But the, the word we're looking for is here is, uh, mean.
Strong's H forty-three twenty-seven. Mean. Mean. Second entry. Moon. Moon.
Moon, okay. Very interesting. Let's see, let's go back.
So that means like short, tall. Male, female, all kinds of people.
Okay. So she, she uses word that, uh, we can find, uh, lots of layers to it right here. Mean, we said minay. What is this word here?
Anashim.
What is Anashim?
She were the priests, uh, the princes.
Um, women. Yeah, all kinds of people. All kinds of people.
Anashim, that's a dare.
Yeah, so Nashim is a word for, Nashim is plural for women, right? Ishaa is one woman, Nashim is multiple women. And there's another word here she used. Um. A little further down that I know is. Um, men. But I won't, I won't go to it right now. It's right, it was right here. Givren. See, Nashim. And givren. Right, men and women. Or women and men. So this is ah Nashim. Right, you see how I say that Allah makes a sound, even when it doesn't make a sound, you can always attribute the ah sound to it. Let's see what it says for that. Anashim. So we have. Anashim, or they wanted like that, Anashim, I will. Anashim is men. Or people in general, I believe. Um.
Right?
Yeah, uh, it, it really means like anybody or, uh, a group of people, right, anybody. Or nobody, it's like, uh. It's a, it's a gender neutral, uh, form of saying people. Um, and, and for, and we just default to men. Like when you say mankind, you just default to the masculine, but i- it can mean masculine or feminine. Um, so let's, let's look at it a little bit, see what happens. Each. See, here's the masculine, ish is masculine, isha is feminine. So this is dealing with. All kinds of men, not just. Male or female, but people. So let's see what, let's see what it says here. It says, uh. Um, Hebrew daily. The day we read. All kinds. All the kinds of people, right? Sheesh. The olam. What, what is, what is sheesh? Sheesh?
Sheesh, um, I forgot what it was though.
That is.
Yeah, she said to have.
Yeah, so remember, ish is a, or yes. Yes is what, there is, right?
Or yes, came.
And what is the opposite of yes?
Yes, me, I have.
Ain.
Ain, correct. So you have yesh and you have ain. You see how you kinda have to just know. Some of these things to be able to read the Hebrew. That's why, that's why the kids get it so much. In, in the, in the primary grades, and then they gotta slowly wean them away from it, because you don't know. These words until you have, have been studying them. So let's, uh, let's blow this out as well. I'mma blow this out. And it says. Yes, right, there is, there exists, and we have the sheesh, right? There is, there exists, is used in the past, and in the future. Pronominial forms are used only in highly formal language. One must, or it is necessary to. Alright, so we have this here. It's saying, uh, the day we. Read. All the kinds. Of people. There are all the kinds of. Uh. I don't know why she, all the kinds of people, why could I say that correctly? Uh, all the kinds, this is all the kinds. Uh. We know this is people. That there is, right, that's definitely saying that there is. Um. The olam, so I know this word because my son's name is Olam. Right?
World.
In the world, there are all kinds of people in the world, or in, in, in the creation, right? Um, shell. What is shell?
I don't remember what shell is.
Anybody remember? That's okay, we had a long day. Look at this. Shell is one of the strange words, right? It means, uh. Of, yeah, or two. Right, two or four. It can be, it can be all of these here, right, shell. Right, so basically. Uh, that exists for. For something, what is the something? Havore.
Havore, havore. Um.
Havore. Creator.
Or the creator.
Yeah, all the names. Right, all the names that exist. Or all the, uh, all, yeah, all the. This is like names, right, all the names that exist for the creator.
Okay. Or of the creators, it's for of.
The same thing, for and of, or, uh, they, they literally mean the same thing, um. Uh, in English, we have the words of and for, but in Hebrew, depending on how you use shell, it can mean of, or it can mean for.
Toda.
It's the, it's, it's the inflection or the context that, that tells you if it's of or for.
Alright.
And, and this is havore, right, what is havore?
Havore, havore, creator.
Creator. Alright, so, so we have. That first sentence. Borre, the creator, right, havore. It's a very interesting word, right? Um. Uh, so watch this. This is borre, and I'm gonna say what this word, what this word comes from. I'm gonna go back to Genesis one and one. Look at this. Beresit, bera. Right? Look at this, created, bara. You see that? Borre, borre is the noun, and borra is the verb.
Non and verb, okay.
Past tense. No?
Past tense, yes. Created. And let's see, issues, um, issues. Fifty-four times, create, creator. To make, to cut down, to dispatch, to make. To form. And that's why I was saying that one about kaze was like, form, why is that form? Because I know. Cre- creator, I mean, bara, bara is to create, and there's also another word for create, which is, um. The one that I thought it would be, uh, for lecreate, which is. Asa. Right here. Asa, which is. To do, or to cause, to do something, right? Asa, to create. He said, he said, uh, um. Yeah, what was the verse? Can, can, um.
Asa would be the feminine, right? Osay would be the masculine.
Asa would be. No, I think Asa is gender neutral. Let's see. Asa is masculine. Um. I'm looking at the, uh, third person si- uh, singer, but, but you're right, Osay and Asa, right? To do. What, what was, what is the verse where he says Osay and Asa? I can't think of the verse right now. Um. But this is also the name of the prophet, uh, Asa, you know, where we get the, where we get the prayer. Yahweh ain't in car lazor. You guys might have heard the song, they sing it sometimes. Yahweh ain't in car lazor. Yeah, it, it, it. It's a, uh. It's a song by the prophetic priest.
May, maybe, maybe you can, uh. Either post that in the chat or send it to me.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll do that, but it's called. It's called Asa's Prayer, and it's Asa is, is the name here, Asa, to do. Um, but yeah, so, so bo, havore, havore, or havore is the creator. All the. Names. Of the creator. I wanna, I wanna see if I can't. Take this sentence. And throw it in translate. And see what it comes up with. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Let's see. Today we read about all kinds of people in the creator's world. All kinds of people. It is Google Translate.
Got much better.
It, it, oh, no, it has gotten a lot better. It's almost perfect for learning Spanish, um, but it's gotten a lot better for Hebrew, yes. So hayam today, we is anu. Corine. Read about. Al, call. All kinds, right, oh, no, about is, is al, this is about. All kinds of. All kinds. Of people. Had Nashim. That is. Or that are in. Alright, sheesh. Or the olam, in the world. Shell that belongs to the creator. Right, the shell is also where you get the word shalii, which is mine. Right? If I were to say shalii. Shalii is mine. Let me show you. Shalii is mine. So shell. Just means belongs to. Right, or for. Uh, that belonged to the creator. The world that belongs to the creator, in the world that belongs to the creator. So very, very, very interesting little, uh. Very little, very interesting little sentence here, right? That she has in here. Uh, this one here was new to me, yomi yom. Uh, yom yomi. Daily. Okay. Um. The world. Right, we can say the world, that this is in the world. So the world. Who, what is who? Who is he? And he is she, that's a, a rhyme we used to always say in my class, who is he and he is she? Right?
Right.
What is, what is this word? Gado, what is gado? Large or big, yes. What about here?
Elohim.
Uh huh. Elohim bara. So now that we've done the first half of this paragraph, these, this next sentence should be, even if you don't know what it says, like in the. In the truest sense, you, you wanna, you, you can kinda glean what it's talking about.
Context clues.
The context, absolutely. We know one word is the world. We know one word is he, gado, right, so the big guy. The big he, and that big he. That big he is Elohim, right? First Elohim. bara, created. The world. That the, the creator created. Let's see what it says in, in, uh, let's see what Google Translate says. World is great, God created. And, and you can see here, this doesn't really make any sense in English, but. So Google Translate is, is having the same struggle that we're having in class, you know, they're only telling you what it is in context. Hebrew is a very complex language like that. You know?
Or, or maybe Hebrew's, Hebrew's very concrete and English is a complex language, and we gotta.
Hey, you wanna get down to the nuts and bolts, I agree with you. Sometimes you have to unlearn in order to in- ingest what you're, what you're learning.
That's kinda the hard part. But that's, that's, that's cool to get through it.
It is, it is hard, it is difficult, and you know, we might not ever get to a point where we are one hundred percent with it. But we can get close. And, and, and the more we, the more we practice with each other and along with ourselves, uh, the, the better off we'll be. In the long run. So, you can tell that I'm not perfect, I'm more of just. I'm more of just your drilling practice, right, I'm just, I'm pointing out those parts where. I know weakness, you know, a, 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 of, of basketball coach, doesn't have to be the best player on the team. He just has to know what parts of the, of the, of the, of the routine to work out.
You showing us how to teach ourselves, though.
Yes, sir. So let's go back to this. Um, and let's keep going, right, here we have the same words here. Right? There is. In the world, right? Yes, be olam. What is this? Y'all are reading Hebrew without the niku.
That's cuz it's Konalo's a rock star.
Yeladine, what is Yeladine?
Children.
What is the, what is the, uh, that's plural, what is the singular form of Yeladine? What is the, what is the, uh, that's plural, what is the singular form of Yeladine? Okay, so it says, there are in the world, there is in the world, children, right? What is ma? What is this?
Children and adult, adult.
Yeah, adults, uh, now, now, you, you vor, right? Right, this word is the same word as this word here, um. Right here. Right? Is, is it misspelled? I don't know if it's spelled correctly, let me see, um.
There's all of missing out of there.
Yes, Alulam, Yeladine. No, it's, it's.
It's right.
Yeah, now remember, this is, this, this is Gemma here, it's gonna be a double Gemma, because it has that dagish forte in the mouth, right? So we have. I know what that word is, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna blow it out anyway. Alright, so we can see the different forms of it. Mevugarin, right, mevugarin, adults or grownups. So now we know the opposites, right, Yeladine, Mevugarin. Let's look at all the forms of it, let's blow it out. Mevugar, Mevugar. You have Mevugar, Mevugarret. And, and, and I tell you, I love those Pahal verbs, man, because the Pahal verb was just straightforward.
What's the infinitive for that one?
There is no infinitive, like, like to be.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, there would be no infinitive for that one.
Not, it's not a verb.
Yeah, cuz I mean, cuz it, it wouldn't be like, well, you couldn't say to be grown up, you would just say you're an adult, you know? So you just say Mevugar or Mevugarret. But yeah, it's, it's, it's very interesting how these, uh, these words can all kind of. And, and there's this word, uh, uh. Gibor, right, and let, let me show you Gibor real quick, um, I wanna go to. Um, women shall not wear, let me see that, I pulled it up. Let's go to, let's go to here. Women shall not wear that which pertains unto a man, there we go. That is gonna be Deuteronomy twenty-two and five, watch this. Um, so we go to Deuteronomy twenty-two. And verse five, the woman shall not wear that which pertains unto a man. Now watch this, very interesting, before I blow it out, what is the word for he, in Hebrew for man? What is the word in Hebrew for a woman? What is the word in Hebrew for women? And then for men, it is Gevrim. And then you have this other word we learned tonight was, was Ashim, which is, I mean, Anashim, which is people. So watch this, let's see if this word for man is any one of those words. Watch this. Alright, shall not wear that which pertains unto a man, we have the word Gebir. Right, right here, Gebir. Shall not wear that which pertains unto a man, this word is not, this word is translated in, in English as man. But it is not, it is not Nashim, Anashim, Ish, it is not Adam, it is not who. It is Gebir. And so, I have a hard time dealing with this verse with Hebrews, because they always wanna say, women can't wear pants. And I, I said, now, this is not saying that a woman cannot wear pants, it's saying that a woman, now here we have. Right, Gebir. Right, here we have Ishar. So we have the word woman in there. But we don't have the word man, we have the word Gebir. So what is Gebir? And so, Hebrews will say, especially the Campi Bruce, they'll say, this is why women can't wear pants, because pants are made for men. Pants pertain to men, and I said, that's not what that is saying. Because Gibor, i- i- if I were to put in the word. Let's see if it'll do it on here, if I were to put in the word. Gibor.
Would you spell it as you?
Yes, ma'am, Gemma, Gemma, Bates and Race. Gibor, Gemma, Bates, Race, and search that out, Gibor turns into stronger.
Into who?
Stronger.
Become stronger.
Yeah, now, now watch this.
So women should not put pants to become stronger?
I'm gonna make it plural. Gibor Eem, right? Giborin, now watch this. Heroes. Warriors.
Warriors, mighty.
Mighty men. Yeah, so now, when, when you, when you read this verse into the proper context, it says the woman or women shall not. And look at this, that which pertains, watch this, I'm gonna go to that which pertains, that is Keely, right? And Keely just means the armor bearer or the weapon or the instrument. Alright, so let's, let's say the instrument, now watch this, let's put it in the context now, the woman or women shall not. Put on the armor or wear the armor, because the armor pertains to who, strong men or mighty men. Neither shall a man put on a woman's garment, so, yeah, he's saying. That women can't do something that men are supposed to do, but it's not about pants, it's about women going to war, going to battle. And you see, when you're in the camp world, and you have these Hebrews who come out of the Seventh Day Adventists. Or the agnostic churches, where they don't allow women to wear pants, because of this verse, and you, you realize that they have misinterpreted. This verse, because it's not talking about pants at all, it's talking about soldiers and going to war. Now you can see some of the errors that we have in the camps, because we, we, we come out of the camps, we come out of the churches. With a Christian understanding of the Bible, rather than a Hebrew understanding of the Bible. This is why we should be telling our daughters not to go to, not, not to join the army.
Too late, mine was a marine.
Hey, a- a- and, and, you know, we are coming out of the captivity, and, you know, I understand that things are what they are, you know? But, you, you think about all those saints in Demona who are in the military. Because they want citizenship. The scripture says, a woman should not be going to war. And so, we have to pick and choose, okay, well, are we gonna violate this law? Are we gonna break this commandment, are we gonna do this for status, are we gonna do this for citizenship, you know, so.
What was the woman's name who drove that spike through the man, the king's head?
What was her name?
I can't think of her name.
I'm drawing a blank, my mind is, is tired now.
Oh man, I can't think of her name. Just not Priscilla.
Jail, took a mallet and drove a ten.
She didn't have a, a shield on or, and, and it was war, I believe.
And we have Deborah, look at Deborah, she was calling judge. And judges usually delivered Israel through war. From, uh, from their enemies, we also have a story of, of, of rehab, of, uh. She wasn't an Israelite, but she was still, uh, a person who, uh. Kinda helped, helped the army, you know, to help the troops. Uh, Esther even helped the troops, so, there are women who have had, uh, important roles in. In, in militarization or in, in the military, for instance, for say, but. Like I say, this was just, I'm just, I'm using this to show you that, when these Hebrews talking about women can't wear pants. My argument is firstly, nobody wore pants back then, cuz pants were not invented until the twelfth century in, in, uh, in Portugal. And. That's where you get the word pantalones, cuz it comes from the word panties, right? And, and, and then secondly, and more importantly is, they're not talking about men versus women. They're talking about, you shot, you're not supposed to send a woman out to, to, to battle for you.
Go back to that word, where?
Okay, uh. Uh, so. This, here we have the word all, we know all means, right? All just means in. Right, then we have that which pertains to, which is Keely. And Keely means, uh, the instrument. Or the furniture. Or the stuff, the things, right? So, for instance, what are the things that pertain to a police officer? What are the things that pertain to a carpenter, what are the things that pertain to a truck driver? So it says, thou should not wear that which pertains to a soldier or a mighty man. What are the things that pertain to a mighty man, the shield, sword, the buckler, the breastplate, the helmet? The instruments or the artifacts of his vestige, right? And, and, I mean, it just, it just shows you, man, how, how grossly misinterpreted we can be. When we don't take the time to learn some Hebrew.
Well, that's part of it, and it's also just being religious. And that, and that, that comes from the indoctrination.
Yeah, it's true.
People been Hebrews for, you know, three or four decades, and they, and they learn from somebody else. Didn't break this down, didn't even look at that textbook.
Right, and, and what it is, this, it's the residue of the stuff that we brought out of Christianity.
That we still carry.
Yes, sir. My, my, my dad is a Muslim and, uh, uh, African American Islam, and, and we had a. We used to, we used to talk about when I was a kid, me and my dad, and I told him, I said, Pop, you know. The stuff that African American Muslims talk about in the mosque are totally different from the things that. Arab Muslims and, and, and Pakistani Muslims talk about in the mosque. And you go to a black mosque and they got Elijah Muhammad, they got Warf Dean Muhammad, they got. Malcolm X and all these other people on the walls, you won't find those people's paintings on the walls in all the mosques around the world. So the, the black Muslims have more of a black, they like, have a black liberation theology. Than their mainstream Islam. You understand, and, and he was saying, well, the, the reason why they don't practice the same Islam. As the Pakistanis or the Iranians or the Lebanese, because when you go into their culture. They have, they have the Quran and everything the Quran says, but they also have infused that. With their own cultural things. And that's why women wear burkas, and that's why in Saudi Arabia, women can't drive, and that's why in some places. They, they use, they use the Quran to cover themselves for mistreating women. But those things that, that they use, that they do are cultural and not religious. And so, so it's, it's a big difference between the culture that people practice. Versus the religion that they practice, and a lot of times, those things merge together. And you kind of fall away from the religion in lieu of pursuing your culture. Because there's nothing in the Quran that says women can't read, or women can't go to school, or women can't drive, or women can't wear pants. Or a woman must have her head covered, none of that is anywhere in the Quran, those are practices in their. Culture that have carried over into the religion, and, and, and so. The Muslims, black Muslims in America, they call themselves a truer form of Islam. Because they have cultural norms to kind of marry into the religion.
It's in our DNA.
Absolutely.
When you look, when you look at, when you look at African Muslims, African Christians. And Israelites, we have more in common. And. People who introduced us to their religions. We have more in common with each other. In, 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 in the United States, you come from a tradition where. Most of the Hebrew Bible was redacted, and the enslaved people sing songs. That were definitely from the Hebrew narrative, not from the Greek narrative. Were, you weren't singing about. Things that happened in the Greek Bible, you were singing about Moses, you were singing about patience. There's a lot, there's a lot to be said for that.
A famous, famous song that we sing all the time, Pumbaya, right? They, they used to always say, what it means, come by here, Nabre, Kumbaya is right here. Pum, which means to rise up or to take action on our behalf. Pum, it, it was, it was three words, it was three, it was three definitive. Statements being made in that song, Pum, which means rise up, Ba, which is come here. And then y'all, right, invoking the name of the Creator, Kumbaya. Rise up, come over here, y'all.
But maybe even the opposite, would you say, bro, Ba, it means into?
Into. Coming to your, coming to your realization. Yes.
We talked about that in class, week before last. We went through that, week before last, but that is absolutely right.
So many layers to that, just that, just that one saying of, of the Kumb, right, to come. To come up, to, 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 to Kumb, to rise up, not just to rise, but to take action, you know? It, it, it's, 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 it's an imperative, rise up, you know?
Oh, that's a revolt song.
Absolutely.
It's turn, it's turned in, it's turned into, um, you know, something soft, but that was, that was a revolution song. That's a, that's, that's a Nat Turner song. No doubt about.
Yeah, and it's, it's the same word used in Isaiah sixty, um, if you go to Isaiah sixty, arise. It says, Kumi. Right, Kumi, meaning I need or the, the, uh. It, it, uh, independent personal pronoun, which is I or. it, it, uh, independent personal pronoun, which is I, or me, the E makes it personal. Arise, not, not arise, but I will arise.
Wake me, I will arise.
Wake me up, I will arise, and I will be the light. Kumiuri. Yeah, absolutely. Alright, so let, let, uh, let's see what else we have here. Um, so we said, uh, there is, in the world, children and adults, what is this here? Zekoni?
That was the elders?
I think, I think that's, I think that's zikne.
Zikne, okay. Zikne, I, I, I agree with you. Zikne, that's it. Zikne, there you go. Zikne, old of age, zikne.
We've not taken that old of age, are we? A code nalo?
I'm very much offended, more offended about being short than being old, though. Anything about either one of them.
So, so here's, here's where I get the zekoni, right? Zekani is like my beard, right? And this is, uh, because we, uh, we, we talked about growing our beards, and, uh, we call it a zekani. Alright? Let's see if it, uh, let's see if it'll expand. Uh, zakan. Zakan, zakani, zikne, right there, zakan, the beard of. Here's some more, uh, zekuni, right, old age.
They have skin, too age, for old.
They have the skin, yeah.
They have skin. He has the skin.
Oh, two age.
Yeah.
Two age to grow old, like.
I'll be an infinitive, right? They have skin. Very interesting. So we have uh, zikne, right? And then we have ha'im. What is ha'im?
Ha'im. Yom, hayom. Hayom.
No, I think that's ha'im, isn't it? Let me see.
Is it people?
Ha'am, ha'am.
Nation?
Nation.
I don't know.
Hayam, yeah, so yeah, people, or nation. Yeah, hayam, like, I mean, hayam. Then we have nesin, vergivrin, women and men. Vehaim. Did it to be coal maybe again?
Where's that? On Koh Hasman all the time.
Hasman all the time. Lomdeem.
Study, lomed, read.
Uh huh, study and read. And learn, uh, my. Let's see what this is. It's end of the night, my, my brain is starting to. Let's see.
Learning, metabar, speaking.
And speaking, yeah. So reading, writing, reading, speaking, what is it?
Learning.
We have learning, reading, and speaking, metabarim. Right? And wh- 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 what was this word here?
Hasman, hasman time, all the time.
All time. All the time, we learn, we read, and we speak. Bishko, bishfo. Read.
Lomdeem is we? Lomdeem?
Lomdeem is, uh, learn. Yeah, study or learn.
Okay, where did you get the we?
And, cause, cause it's we, here, it's plural.
Yeah, yeah, the im, the im.
Im makes it we. We learn, and we read.
You know that, okay, you, it's late.
It sure is, I'm not seeing.
Lomed, lomed, lomdeem.
Lomed is who?
Lomed, lomed is male, lomed is female, and lomdeem is both.
It's plural.
I'm gonna put it in translator here, watch this. Constantly studying, right, all the time, which is constantly, constantly studying and reading and talking.
That im is what gets me, it's.
Saying, we are studying, we are learning, we are reading. We are reading, we're studying, we're learning.
Cause we don't have to put the pron, personal pronoun.
I'm sorry, that's not it. We are, we are studying, we are reading. Uh, we are.
Talking or speaking.
Speaking, yeah. Uh, and then this here is bishfo, or what is it?
Uh, I think it's, uh, basava.
Basava, basava, in the language. Basafa, right here, basafa. Evrit.
But that's, that's a long way when you start, when you start taking those vowels out, you gotta get it, you just gotta get it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's not easy, without, without the code, it's not easy. But, uh, it, it, it's not impossible, you just gotta, it, it just takes longer to decode, that's all. It takes longer to decode.
That's a, so that's not a, that's, that's not a pay, that's a fe.
Right, that's a fe. And it's probably not a sheen, it's a scene. It's, 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 it's a fe and a scene, not a sheen.
Yes, 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 okay.
Basafa. Basafa evrit. And this is the, uh, this is that same thing in, uh, in the Hebrew.
The other thing is, when you take the vowels out, you take, you take the, uh, distinction between the sheen and the scene.
Yeah. Yeah, you do. Bekita, bekita.
What was, what, what was the, what was the, uh, the root meaning of basafa again?
The root meaning of basafa. The root meaning is in the language, let's, let's click on it.
Oh, okay.
Safa, which is language. There's a, there's a Bible verse that says, in another language, right, he will speak to his people. I think it's in Nehemiah, but I'm, I'm not sure. In another language.
For you, yeah. It's auto completing it.
Yeah, and it's, and Isaiah twenty eight eleven, let's go there. Isaiah twenty eight eleven, for with samring lips, and, and another tongue, will he speak to his people? Ba, ki bela, an, gi, laagi? Ba, yeah, that's right, yeah. Bella agi, bella agi, bella az. Yeah. Agi, yeah, bella agi, and there's that word, safa. They have safa, but they don't know it's safa. So in another language, safa. Uve la shon. Uve la shon. Acharat, acharetz, acharetz. Ya da ver, right, just speak, ya da ver, right?
The bear, the bear.
Yeah, and the, the, the yud makes it plural, makes it future tense.
Ya da bear.
Yeah, ya da bear, the yud makes it, uh, future tense. See how it says here at the bottom, says, in English, he will speak. That, that yud makes the bear future tense. Mete bear, the, the mem makes it past tense. But that's what I wanted to show you, the, the safa, is there. See, I, I, I can, I can connect these words with different lang, I can connect these words with different scriptures in the Bible. Uh, but it's, I'm just, as the night gets closer to the end, I get slower and slower at it.
Well, we're, we're not ahead of you, so I started out slow. I started out where you are now. I'm, I'm, I'm an early riser, so I'm struggling.
Oh, wow. Well, we are, we are really through for tonight. I, I, we're not gonna go any further down this document, cause one, I don't have any more to translate, or try, or to type. And two, is just, that, this is enough meat for one night anyway.
We got it, we got enough, we're full.
Yes, sir. And does anybody have any questions about this or anything before we wrap up the class?
No, Amy.
Amy?
Amy. Amy, uh, question, oh, what is questions?
Shayla Lo, is.
No, no, uh, no questions?
Hi, my.
Hi, little one.
I had to stay on mute because I have my grandkids.
Grandkids are a blessing.
Absolutely. I'm jealous, I want some grand.
You can come and get them.
I'll be playing, I'll be like, I'll, I'll be blending.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, lower the arc, so we can go ahead and depart, um, so that we can, uh, get ready for the next day. Anybody, sure, no more questions, comments, concerns?
I hope to pick this up on, uh, Yom Chaimeshi in the morning, um, and also in the evening.
Well, I would look and see what the schedule is like for the holy day, because I know that Samachia, after Saron Samachias has ceased the classes until after the holy day. Um, and I'll see what next week looks like, and I'll put it in the chat, so we know if we, if we, if we decide not to have class on next week.
Go on with, uh, this, or with, jump into, uh, what is nine, right, favorite?
I, I'll pull from somewhere, I don't know, I don't, I haven't, I haven't looked at nine or ten yet, but I might go ahead and go forward, uh, just so we have something to talk about, but, uh, let's play it by ear, cause I don't know if there's gonna be, uh, a holy there, there's usually gonna be, there's usually a, a, a holy day somewhere after the blowing of the trumpet, and so I wanna make sure I'm not, uh, asking you all to come out on the holy day.
That's okay.
So, uh, I'll look and see, and I'll put the, I'll put the, the next thing in the, in the chat when I, when I, when I can put my finger on it.
Okay, cause we can al- always cancel it if you put it there, something is calling.
We have, we have enough time between that we can really study these. And she's probably gonna go over these when she comes back anyway.
Hallelujah.
He said.
This is good, this is good.
Hallelujah, more, more, more rain, more, more rain, more rain.
I, I learned just as much from you all, as, as you know from me, so I, I appreciate y'all coming on the class and, and asking questions and keeping me honest.
Appreciate you, you using your time, devoting your time.
Okay. Alright, uh, na lehagish akivo. Rivavoh afay Israel, hallelujah.
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 Hallelujah.